Alrighty, good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Wes AC meeting. It is October 13th and I'm going to turn this right over to Greg Geist. And then if he'll let me say a little blurb after he's done, we'll move right on into the agenda.
Absolutely, and thanks, everyone, for being here tonight. We have, we do have a full agenda and I'll be brief. I did send out a weekly update today, so hopefully you're up to speed on what's going on with Wes. I also wanted to welcome Counselor Coserbadi as a new appointed member of the committee. And let folks know that I don't see David Schleef on the call tonight, but he let us know that his business has moved outside of our service area. So we will be seeking a new business member. We're also looking at the HBA or development community. We have a meeting, is it tomorrow or Monday? With Preston Course from the Home Builders Association to fill Roseanne's seat. And then we have a business seat and an environmental seat that are also going to be open. So, yeah, sorry, Shelley, just let me know that's Monday. The other thing, so just to kind of introduce this, I'm really, it's been a long journey since Lynn came on in 2015, maybe early 16. You know, we had at one point two engineering staff. And now we have five and we'll have six once we fill Jeff Stalard's vacant position. Now that he's become the capital program manager. And we've done, as Lynn will show you, a ton of planning. And the foundation of the work that we do really isn't planning. And we spend quite a bit of money on it. And you know, you're going to be looking at a five-year CIP tonight that Lynn's going to be presenting. But there's really, you'll also see 10-year rate projections, which means that behind that five-year CIP, because of all the planning work that we've done over the past few years, we have a really good idea of what our needs are moving forward out, you know, to 10, 11 years. So I just want to emphasize that I just feel like we're in a really, really good position. We've done the foundational work and Lynn has been masterful in her team in doing that. And now we're talking about what we need to build and we're talking about long-term rate projections. And, and basically kind of a no surprises kind of approach. So I'm really pleased and I will leave it at that.
Alright, I want to just give a little plug. So Shelley's been working on the interviews. And I know that a lot of you have participated. If some of you have not, I encourage you to contact Shelley. Or if nothing else, at least participate in the survey that you can do that Shelley has provided. So we want input from everyone. I think it's really important that we get a really well-rounded experience out of this. So I just, she wants to wrap it up this month. So if you could please help her out, that would be wonderful. And then who's going to talk? Are you going to mention the ARPA funds again, Greg? Oh, Ron, Ron's going to do that.
Yeah, I'm going to do that. Is now the time?
I think so.
Okay, I will be quick. We have, we have good news. We are thankful that this, just last week, the Board of County Commissioners appropriated American Rescue Plan Act funding for three stormwater projects that are in our draft. CIP and our Storm System Master Plan that the Advisory Committee had moved in support of us taking that to the county commissioners, which we're going to do next week at an issues meeting. We had made the decision to not include the capital projects that are in the Storm System Master Plan in this capital plan update, because we hadn't had the conversation with the county commissioners yet. And we wanted to do that first before we started programming those projects into our, into our CIP. So this update, the one that you've seen, the one that's being presented tonight is a sort of a business as usual approach for our Three Creeks project and some of our small drainage projects and fixes. And, and so what we'd like to do is because of, because of that great news and because of the funding that the board has provided to us, we would like to include those projects in this CIP update. What that would mean is, is that between the presentation tonight and the next presentation, part two, we would modify the, the surface water section only to include those projects and the project fact sheets, so that we can get it incorporated into this update. We think that's really important to do right now. And while, you know, we're not thrilled about changing plans on you in between, I think it's, it's relatively, it's important, but it's a relatively minor change. And so we had spoken to Chair Helm and Vice Chair DiLoreto about making that change. And they thought it would, it would be doable. So we're just sort of asking, we want to flag that tonight and ask for your patience while we update that. But you will see a change in, in the plan in between these two presentations to, to recognize that. That was it.
And then can you tell us where the, where that would be affected by that, this $29 million?
Sure, so the, the projects, the, the board awarded funding for three projects that are in the Upper Kellogg Creek Basin, where we've identified some significant drainage issues. These are three of the top 10 that we have in our CIP. So the, the funding will allow us to get those projects going a little earlier than some of the other projects. We're going to turn around and, and update our CIP relatively soon in 2023. And depending on how the conversation goes with the board next week, we'll probably be programming all of the CIP projects to some degree into that. But it will, it will allow us to get those projects going and we'll, we'll have a, a bit of an impact on, on the, the financial strategy and the rate projections going forward. So it's, it's really good news.
Yeah, and if I can just add, I mean, these are the projects that we talked about the last couple meetings. And I see Brian Johnson on the call. These are some projects in Kellogg Creeks that have been lingering. And we got ARPA money, so that relieves the ratepayers from having to fund those projects and we can fast track them. So I'm very anxious and excited, I should say, to get those on our revised CIP in front of the board as soon as possible, so we can execute those projects.
Excellent. Okay, um, public comment. I'm not seeing any names here on the screen that I don't know. But is there anyone, Chris, do you know, is there anyone that we need to see if there's any public comments tonight?
Definitely raise your hand or come off me.
I'm not seeing any. Okay, alright, seeing none, we're going to move right on to Lynn with the CIP.
Chris, you want to bring the presentation up? Thank you very much. And, and thanks to all of you for taking the time to attend this extra meeting tonight. I, I appreciate it, Wes appreciates it. Tonight, we're here to talk you through the draft CIP you received a few weeks ago, answering any of your questions. And then at the regular meeting in November, we'll ask for your endorsement of the plan. Now that you've been hearing about stormwater planning or surface water planning in the last few meetings, I thought I'd point out that this capital plan includes surface water. But what, tonight, I'm going to focus on the wastewater part of the capital plan. At over $190 million planned expenditures over the next five years and $330 million over the next 12 years. Those numbers are shown here. The wastewater program is an order of magnitude or 10 times the size of the surface water program. And we have over 20 projects going on concurrently. It's a lot of work. In addition, unlike the surface water program where projects are generally independent, as Ron described them, all the significant projects in the wastewater CIP are interdependent. So sequencing is important and changes to the capital plan can resonate throughout the program. Next slide. Um, tonight, we're going to talk about what the CIP is, what a CIP, a capital improvement project is, why we have one, how we develop it. We'll talk about how the program's structured. And during my six years at Wes, I built the staff and the program as Greg described, expanding it every year, defining it every year, and updating it every year. And we'll take a look at our accomplishments and where we're at today. I'll walk you through our major planned work that's included in the CIP. Then Aaron's going to talk about the rate impacts of the capital program. And I'll end and summarize next steps. Any questions before we get started? Okay, next slide. So throughout capital program, the wastewater and surface water programs support Wes in achieving its mission of protecting water quality in our watershed for your enjoyment and that of our Wes staff shown here, who dedicated their careers to water quality. Next slide. Similarly, Wes protects public health in our service area by preventing overflows up in the system and maintaining fishable, swimmable receiving streams. Next slide. We do that in a fiscally responsible manner. Our rates and rate zone two over on the right side of the slide, where Wes is responsible for both conveyance and treatment. Our rates are below average compared to other providers in the Portland metro region and, and throughout Oregon, in fact. Next slide. So I mentioned this, I think, every time I talk to you. And it bears repeating, for the portion of the program, the wastewater program, that includes Kellogg, Tri-City, that discharged to the Willamette. I call it the Willamette Program and the conveyance system associated with Kellogg and Tri-City. And that's most of the CIP, frankly. We are assuming that infiltration and inflows reduced by 65% in 19 basins, as recommended in our Collection System Master Plan that we completed in 2019. And the plant, the, that should save us an estimated $120 million in our capital plan. Every project you hear about tonight that is related to capacity is sized, assuming we achieve this INI reduction. So it's really important. We have capacity for the next 20 years for dry weather or organics. That means we can support the population for the next 20 years, assuming our current discharge permit doesn't change at Tri-City and Kellogg. We don't anticipate it will, but that's, that's a caveat. Hang on a second. All the capacity projects then, in the capital program, in the Willamette Basin, will, are, are for wet weather flows. So we contain or cap wet weather flows, we contain our costs. Yep, William?
I wanted to know what the commitment from the, from the municipalities of participating in this INI reduction is. Are they 100% behind this?
I'll talk about that, what we're doing in that later on. And then if you have other questions, you can ask them. Next slide. Um, so here we see that the planned annual spending for the wastewater program is 30 to 40 million dollars. We also exceed that, you'll see in 24, 25 conveyance projects. We can phase, and we do phase, constructing so many miles of pipe with, you know, per year treatment plant projects. We can't do that. We can't build half an outfall, we can't build half a tank. So 24, 25 will be constructing the outfall project at Tri-City along with some other treatment work. And so we've got a bit of a lump in 24, 25. Next slide. So what is a capital improvement plan? It's a roadmap for Wes's future. The engineering team developed our capital plan through several master planning and facilities, planning projects. The purpose of the projects is to identify our needs, both for capacity and reliability. And we prioritize the projects, whether by how urgently the projects needed or as dictated through sequencing. We do the best we can as engineers to level the annual spending. Then we send it over to finance. They model the spending and translate our plan into rates. And they come back to us and tell us we can't do what we want normally. And so some back and forth, back and forth. And we, and we end up where we are today with our draft capital plan. You know, it's a natural tension and we as engineers wring our hands, knowing what has to be built and want to build it today. Finance is rightfully telling us what's doable on rates. And so this slide demonstrates that. And ultimately, the decision on rates and what we can build is up to the county board. But it's my job to make sure you and your role as advisors to the board and board members have the facts that you need to make informed decisions on when projects can be built. No one likes to ask for money, no one likes to raise rates. But we need to recognize there's a real risk in not building and not maintaining infrastructure. Next slide. Here we talk about the planning that we've done in my time at Wes. When I arrived in late 2015, planning was underway. Matt House was doing that project on the Hoodland Master Plan. And we've also developed in my time here, facilities plan for boring. The sanitary system master plan was a significant multi-year effort completed in 2019. Out of that plan came two major conveyance programs that I'll talk about in a second. And our recommendation, as I talked about, to reduce INI is most cost-effective path forward for the district in the Willamette Basin. Also a multi-year effort, then the Willamette Facilities Plan used the sanitary sewer master plan as a foundation and put forth a recommendation for a $50 million wet weather expansion at the Tri-City facility to accommodate 20, 40 wet weather flows. Y'all endorsed the Willamette Facilities Plan early, earlier this year. Next slide. So wastewater projects are classified as either capacity-driven or reliability-driven. The important difference is capacity projects are eligible in part or in full for SDC funding. Reliability projects are not. They're like fixing your furnace, which isn't much fun. They, but they provide our O&amp;M staff with facilities that allow them to do their jobs efficiently and importantly, safely. Next slide. Um, about 60% or two-thirds of our capital plan by dollars, both five years and 12 years out, are reliability-related and about a third of capacity-related. Next slide. And that's been true historically. Most of our work is around reliability, maintaining our infrastructure. Next slide. So the wastewater capital program is organized by location or facility or category. And the purpose of this slide is basically to show you that the capacity projects are limited to the Tri-City facility and the conveyance systems that get flow to Tri-City. Kellogg capacity is capped 25 million gallons a day. There are no growth or capacity-related projects at Kellogg. In the future, we'll have an expansion up at Hoodland, that's reflected here. So are there any questions? Nope, okay. So I measure performance.
Wait, I'm sorry Lynn, I think William does have a question.
Yep.
Up, unmute yourself, please.
That'll help, yeah, sorry, thank you. The difference between the five-year CIP and the 12-year CIP, other than the length of time.
Are you asking?
I'm not real clear. I mean, we do, we just have greater focus on what needs to be done in the five-year and it's not quite as clear for the 12-year or.
No, what, what it is, is that when we did this back and forth with finance, we needed to stretch our five-year program out to achieve the rates we are asking for. And that stretches the program out to 12 years. There are many, many, because these are big projects. They last many years. They go over five years, they straddle five to seven years out. And so I wanted to show all 12 years to get to the end of the program. That's the difference.
So it could be just shown as the 12-year CIP?
It could. We, Aaron and I talked about that quite a bit. It's convention to have a five-year plan, a five-year CIP. And I think that has to do with SDCs, as is explained to me. But it's conventional to have a five-year plan.
Yeah, if you look at any other utility such as ours, they, it's a five-year CIP. That is the convention and it is based on absolute statute surrounding how you can calculate a five-year system development charge. You, you do that based on a five-year capital improvement plan.
Okay.
So, and I, I think just more practically, it's like, we want to present a five-year CIP. We have, you know, well, in these times, it's, it's less than others maybe, but a reasonable expectation that our cost forecasting is accurate. Once you get out past five years, it's less so. But what we want you to know is that there is a longer-term plan behind this.
So we could have set this up as a five, 10, and 15-year?
We could, yes, with less certainty, yes.
Yeah. And, and I also didn't want to represent by just showing five years. You wouldn't see half a project, so you wouldn't realize how big a project is.
I can clearly see that the five-year by itself would not be sufficient. I was just wondering why we chose 12 years.
That's what we extended our plan to.
Thank you.
Um, so I measured performance of the wastewater program by two metrics. One, are we doing the work that we plan to do? And are we delivering projects efficiently? That means on budget. And can we demonstrate therefore that we're being good stewards of ratepayer dollars? So I want to take a minute and look at that. So this looks back 10 years at historical wastewater budget and actual spending. And 10 years ago, 11, 12, Wes was completing the MBR project. So we're, we spent quite a bit of money that year. After that, there really wasn't much of a capital program or, and, and not much capital expenditures. I joined in late 2015 and got two major construction projects off the ground. Um, and then in the last couple of years, we've moved into design. So we haven't spent the money that we wanted to. I can tell you that the projects listed in our CIP for every year, we're working on those. But we aren't moving to construction as quickly as we think, thought we would. But the dollars going forward, we are in design. Those projects are real, they need to be built. And we have five engineers, as Greg said, and we're doing the best we can on moving those projects forward. That's what I have to say about that. So we are working on the projects, they are getting to construction as fast as we want to. Um, next slide. Since the capital program is based on INI, I thought I would address William, where we are in INI reduction work. Wes had one of the 19 basins that we're responsible for in terms of reducing INI. And that's the Mount Talbert Basin. Under Jessica Renner's leadership, we have identified over several years very methodically where we're getting flow into our system in the Mount Talbert Basin. And now we're working on, we found some low-hanging fruit, like stormwater pond that drains into our system and manholes, manholes in the low, lows in the creek where the Mount Talbert Interceptor runs and we're working on removing that. We are working with our partner cities. We have a pilot program, which I believe we talked to you about, a five-year program where we fund one-third of the partner cities INI reduction work. We have agreements with Oregon City and Gladstone and that work is underway. But all of our partner cities have recently completed collection system master plans. They've identified where the INI work needs to be done. And, and you know, varying degrees are moving forward with, with that work. We're monitoring the effectiveness of that work through flow metering and modeling, updated modeling of our system. So it's important and we're working on it. We've kicked that off. Next slide. Big projects that we've completed in the last couple of years. In fact, this last year, the Tri-City Solids Handling Improvements Project, the estimate for that project was 35 and a half million dollars. The bids came in a couple of million dollars below that. But we finished where the, where the estimate is, just 35 and a half million dollars, funny how it works. Change orders were 3.4%. I usually think that 2% to 4% is a successful project. Owner requested changes, change in scope was 3.7%. And the major change was a 600 to $800,000 change, where we moved risk over to the contractor for cleaning the existing digesters before we did work on those. We saw that as a, we learned some things and saw that we were going to do it ourselves and thought of something that would expose us to delays and risks. So move that over to the contractor and that changed contract amount. That project is done, up and running. Next slide. Over at Kellogg, we had a broad improvement project there. It was estimated or under contract at 18 and a half million dollars. We finished it at 17 and a half million dollars. Change orders again, 3% to 4%. And owner requested changes 6.2%, which is quite a bit. But we saw early on that we were going to come in way under budget and we added some work to the contractor's scope. Got some more work done at Kellogg. So that's where we are today, next slide. Now I'm going to talk about work that we're going to do. Are there any questions before I turn to that? Okay, I like to look at the wastewater CIP by area of work, whether it's treatment or collection system. There are completely different types of projects inside or outside the fence, different types of challenges, design, and frankly, different kind of expertise required, both inside Wes and with consultants. In the past, we mostly worked on treatment and for the next couple of years, we'll be more treatment than conveyance. But then we're going to be turning to some major programs in the conveyance system and our dollars in terms of percent that we spend will be shifting to conveyance. Next slide. I just wanted to remind everybody what our system looks like. We have major conveyance to the north and the south that goes to Tri-City. And the capital program in terms of capacity has major conveyance project to the north. One coming into Tri-City from the south at the Tri-City Plant itself. Next slide. So let's talk about Tri-City. 12 years of work, 130, I can't see all of the slide, but by memory, 136 million dollars, I think. Blue is capacity, orange is condition projects organized by largest project at the top in descending value. And you can see that we have two sizable projects coming up, the outfall and the wet weather expansion. And I'll talk about each of those briefly. Next slide. John?
Thank you, I wasn't sure if staff were allowed to ask questions, but I appreciate you answering. I was curious on the SDC element, that 50 million, right? That's, that's the SDC component?
So portions of the project are SDC-related.
So does, does Wes have a? does Wes have a good kind of fun balance with regard to SDCs? Or if SDCs don't happen over the five year period? Or maybe the 12 year period? That confused me a little bit, but I guess this is a 12 year CIP. So, so at least right now, we're seeing pretty big downturn. I don't know that that will last long, but what if SDCs don't come in on your schedule? What happens? I guess that's the real question.
Well, John, I would, either Aaron can chime in or we will talk about that at the so Lynn's going to present the engineering piece and then Aaron is going to present the financial piece. So I think we'll answer your question.
Okay. You okay to wait, John?
Sorry. Yeah, yeah, that's fine. I thumbs up. Yep.
Okay. So the Tri-City Outfall project estimated at capital cost of $53 million is a 90 inch pipe that goes from the Tri-City facility out to the Lamont just downstream, north of the 205 Bridge. The capacity is build out, which is 160 to 170 MGD up from its our current outfall capacity of 70. It's, you know, the first of our capacity expansion projects and it's good to work downstream to upstream. So there you go. And just a benefit of the outfall, it provides much better mixing characteristics in the Lamont River, which is good for fish and good for the treatment. And I understand that you'll hear more about that at the November meeting. Progressive design, a progressive design build. So we brought a contractor onboard. They're helping us with design is a very complex geotechnical project, half, half of the project or half mile is tunneling. It's in preliminary design and construction will start in fiscal year 24, 25. Next slide. The next big project at Tri-City, also around $50 million, is Wet Weather Expansion. We increase our peak capacity at the Tri-City facility from 70 to 105 MGD, which is a projected flow for 2040. The project was identified and somewhat defined in the Lamont facilities plan. So that's where we're at with that. We now move to board approval and then DEQ negotiations. We have design beginning on that project in 2026. It'll take about five years to design and build the blue facilities in the on the site plan there. Yes, MTD is 1 million gallons per day. Tried to say that early on a few times. Okay. Next slide. Let's move to the collection system. We have about 18, we have 18 projects scheduled in the collection system. The collection system you can see skews more towards capacity projects. And as I said before, this is mostly conveying flow to the Tri-City facility. 14 of these projects are underway. And four are scheduled in the CIP for later years. So we are working on it. There's two major programs in the conveyance system. And I'll talk about each of those. Next slide. First is the Clackamas Interceptor Program valued at $32 million in the five year plan and 52, 12 years out. It's being built in phases. There's three projects on the Clackamas Interceptor itself. One on the Mount Scott Interceptor, which is just downstream of Clackamas. Those discharged to the Intertight Tube Pump Station, which is being expanded and another force main being built. The IT2 pump station is that red dot with the arrow coming out of it. All of this work is under design. I believe the force main is scheduled to be constructed starting next summer. We'll do 60% design on all the interceptors, make sure everything works together, and then we'll build the interceptor work in phases. Next slide. Coming up from the south is a Lamont Interceptor Program. This brings flow from Westland and from the Lamont Pump Station. We will expand capacity. In fact, we're going to build a new Lamont Pump Station and then a new pipe from down south across the river and to the Tri-City Plant. Interesting part of this project is that because of our close relationship with ODOT that we developed we're putting an outfall right next to where they are building a bridge. We were able to put a very complicated part of that project. Put, we're put a pipe on the 205, the new Abernathy Bridge, the expanded Abernathy Bridge. That design is done. The bids are in. It came in on budget. They will build it and it'll be done in a towards the end of that project. So it'll be constructed in a couple of years. With the $10 million has been committed to them. I believe it's been transferred. Doesn't show up on the books in the capital program until it's, they actually build the pipe. So it'll be a few years.
William has his hand up.
Yeah.
Thank you. The interceptor pipes, it's themselves or itself, are those subterranean? Or, you know, it just seems like there's going to be such an opportunity for construction eventually along there when we get the when we get the 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 mill site developed. I'm just wondering where are those pipes going?
On this? The pipes are on the Westland side.
Yeah, but are they above ground?
Oh, no. Well, on the bridge it is. It's hanging on the bridge.
Yeah, I understand that, but the others, the others are all subterranean, huh?
They are. They are.
Okay.
By putting that pipe, that pipe on the bridge, we saved millions of dollars for the county and you can imagine how complex that project would be.
That's brilliant. That's brilliant.
It was.
Really happy to see that.
Yeah, we were very happy to have that done. Greg?
Yeah, I was curious. When I looked at the sheet itself on the project, it looked like the project takes five to seven years to get done, like you spread it out equally, but it's a force main. So I'm trying to, I mean, I can see on an interceptor where you can put pipe between two manholes and the thing still works. But on a force main, you got to go from the pump station to wherever it ends up. You can't do part of it, can you? I don't, I'm not understanding how you do that.
Well, I'd have to look at it and refresh my memory. It's going to take a couple of years to design and a couple of years to build.
Yeah, I get that, but the, but we spread the money out like you could spend $2 million every year. And I can see the design, you know, is a million and then it's like six or seven to build it, which would occur or whatever the number is, you know, over a shorter period of time. Anyway.
I'll take a look at that, Greg, and make sure we we put it in there, right?
Oh, I would just add that right now we use the Lamont Pump Station, the existing pump station to pump up. And then it flows gravity across the arch bridge in Oregon City. And so what this, this, which is capacity limited and we cannot add a bigger pipe on, according to ODOT, they will not allow us to build a bigger pipe across that bridge. So this will, while it will take, we won't need to use it until we well, we will use it, but but we currently have capacity across the arch bridge. Once we have this built, we won't rely on that capacity across the arch bridge anymore.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, but we still will build it all at once. So if we're showing it to spread out, then we need to take a look at that. I was going to say something else about this, but I forgot. So, oh, I know. Westland has quite a bit of work planned in that area, just on their side of the 205 Bridge and the old arch bridge. And if staff isn't already working with Westland staff on that, they will be to make sure that we're coordinated on work that we're doing in the same area. So about 27 million 10 is spent already. Not shown in the CIP, but as a practical matter, 10 is spent.
Spent or earmarked?
Earmarked. Transferred bank accounts. So to me, that means spent, but.
Off your desk.
Yeah.
All right. Next slide. I wanted to finish up with just two slides on costs. So our costs, the planning costs that are in the CIP are largely from master plans, as I said. Those are class five costs. They carry a contingency of plus or minus 30%. Contingency is uncertainty, but it's also a placeholder cost for things that aren't defined yet. We do cost estimates at 30, 60, 90% design and the contingency shrinks because costs are known and they're moved into the estimate and not a contingency. My point with this slide is the estimate should stay the same. Barring outside factors, which I'll talk about in a minute, as you move through design. As you shrink contingency, the the price of the project doesn't come down and I don't want there to be any misunderstanding. If we say it's a $50 million project, it should be a $50 million project all the way through. Tri-City solids was like that. It's 35 million all the way through. So just so you know, contingency shrinks, cost of the project doesn't change. Unless, next slide. You have factors that change. The cost of the project. So, you know, I can't guess when projects are built, what the construction cost index will be. So we index all the costs in the, in the plan are of dollars from when the plan, so 2018, $20,19. As we move closer and we update the capital plan every year to executing a project, those costs will be adjusted and we'll have to adjust the CIP if the costs continue to go up. 2022 costs, Aaron tells me at the end of second quarter, the CCI is 187. Costs increase October 22 over 2021, 5.7%. We'll keep an eye on it. We update the capital plan every year. And we'll see what happens.
Tony?
Hi, this is probably not terribly germane, but I know with my program, we're seeing a significant spike in construction costs related to some federal requirements around American iron and steel, Build America, Buy America, et cetera, et cetera. And we're seeing that, you know, utilities are having a very difficult time, you know, projecting expenses and even, even, you know, completing projects that are currently underway that have been in, you know, in progress for 18 months, two years. The the costs at the end of that project spiked dramatically. Are you guys seeing similar with your projects? And how are you projecting for that? I know the construction index will help with that, but
Yeah.
What is your experience with that? And it's okay if we need to take this offline. I don't want to drag the meeting out. I'm just really curious to know what you guys are seeing.
I can answer it, I think, real quickly. It depends on the project, right? It's all metals and steel and iron and steel, I guess. We used federal funding for the solids project. And at that point, it was 2018, I think there was talk of tariffs and a lot of uncertainty. We did a sensitivity analysis because we thought about indexing costs on that work. It turned out not that our analysis showed it wouldn't make a significant difference. So we didn't. It didn't affect us. Our big pipeline projects, I don't think, well, maybe the force main, but it's not federally funded. So at least for a while, we're okay. But I do understand and the new, the new requirements are even more strict than the past ones from my understanding. So it's something to keep an eye on.
They are a joy.
Yeah, so I've heard. Okay, Aaron, you're up.
All right. Thanks, Lynn. So as Greg shared, this is a no surprises approach that we're taking. And the financial planning and rate impact that we'll be going over over the next few slides is going to look really similar to what we shared during the budget process and earlier this calendar year when we shared the financial strategy. Because those incorporated and earlier draft of the CIP that Lynn shared tonight. So there have been a few changes since then, and that's what we'll be primarily focusing on. Oh, as we've shared in the past, rates are developed based on a revenue requirement analysis. And that's where we take all costs of capital investment, debt service and operating expenses. And we calculate the revenue required from rates to cover those costs. Capital investment is a significant driver of wastewater rates, as Lynn shared. Capital including debt, which is all originally incurred for capital expenses is more than half of the revenue requirements in Wes's 10 year financial plan for wastewater. Previous advisory committee guidance recommended back in 2018 was that Wes's annual rate increases should fall within a range established by a floor determined by the annual engineering news record, construction cost index and a ceiling of 10%. In January and March of this calendar year, we shared with the advisory committee and received a recommendation to follow a new long-term financial strategy that achieves rate harmonization in 2030, 31, sets targets for capital spending, operating expense, operating expenses and debt service timing and establishes steady predictable rate increases of 5% over the 10 year planning horizon. The rate harmonization piece means that the current $11.40 differential in Wes's service rates between rate zone one and rate zone two will go away. So by 2030, 31, all customers of Wes will remain the same for the service that they receive regardless of where they live. Next slide, please. So this table compares the projections that we use during the budget with the updated projections using the CIP that Lynn presented tonight. So during the budget, we were forecasting the five year CIP would be $182.9 million. This most recent CIP is projecting $192 million over five years. And as Lynn shared on our previous slide, the difference there is the force main inclusion over the I205 Bridge. So Wes was able to save some money by contracting with ODOT for that project, which is about $10 million. Over the 10 year planning horizon, costs have increased from 333 million used during budget development to 344.3 million. And again, the differences there are primarily coming out of the I205 Bridge force main as well as an $800,000 budget that we use every year for asset management renewal and replacement. Originally, we had included only seven years of annual budget and that's now been extended into years eight through 10. So those are the differences there. We started this year with more reserves than we were originally anticipating. During the budget, we were expecting to start the year with $142 million in construction and SDC reserves. And to answer John's question, about $50 million of that balance is SDC fund reserves. We actually started the year with closer to 151 million. That's estimated as we're still closing out last fiscal year. And the reason that we have more than we thought we would is because we had much higher system development charge revenues in the fourth quarter than we were projecting. We saw some very large multifamily developments pay SDC fees. And basically ended with $4.4 million in SDC revenue than we had estimated. So it's very hard to project SDCs sometimes. The other difference there is that we have lower construction spending. So that unspent fund balance, it just carries forward into this next fiscal year and becomes available for those capital projects. We haven't changed the other assumptions in our planning model. We haven't changed the economic assumptions around O and M cost increases or population growth at this time. We're also not considering alternate funding like that that we received from the Energy Trust for the cogeneration engine or the Portland PGE Reduable Development Fund. If those were considered, of course, they would have an impact on rates determined by the magnitude. And debt financing, we're still estimating to be in 26, 27. William?
Maybe I'm just stupid, but this has a five year CIP and then a 10 year projected sewer capital investment. Why is it 12 to match up with the five year CIP and the 12 year CIP?
Yeah, that's a fair question. So we've always forecasted our long range financial plan over 10 years. So we haven't typically gone 12. We actually have kind of a 20 year extended plan, but as Greg was saying earlier, it gets more uncertain the further out we go. So we're really looking at 10 years. And the 10 years was what we presented during the financial strategy that we shared with the advisory committee earlier this year. So for the, for the purpose of comparison, we wanted to keep that same planning horizon. One of the targets that this strategy hinges on is the harmonization of rates, which is Um, one of the, uh, targets that this strategy hinges on is the harmonization of rates, which is about ten years out. So we do update every year, uh, in conjunction with the budget and we use the latest information that we get from Lynn's team um, to develop, uh, updated projections. Um, and so we could, we could do a twelve-year this next year, uh, just to kind of sync up with the capital plan.
I'm just, uh, yeah, and I guess I don't mean to put too fine a point on it, but one's, one's five and twelve and the other's five and ten. It just it just seems a bit capricious. I don't know. Maybe it's tradition or something else, but it, uh, it twists my head a little bit.
Yeah, to be clear, the twelve-year came out of when I, when we had to stretch our capital plan out to level rates. The projects ended after twelve years. I didn't want to extend it to something that may either cut it off or extend it to fifteen, which showed like no spending in three years after that, because I don't think that's right. Um, so I left it at twelve.
Thanks, Lynn.
It was capricious, but it was well thought out.
Uh, so in short, the annual projected rate increases aren't impacted by the change in the CIP because they're offset essentially by an increase in reserves. Um, so we're still looking at five percent over our planning horizon. Um, to, to touch on the SDC fund balance, um, that existing balance, we're expecting to be able to cover the costs in the five-year, which are about seventy million dollars with additional SDC revenues collected over that timeframe. Um, so we do believe that we have sufficient reserves and anticipated funding to cover those costs. The next slide, please. So this chart is exactly the same as the one that we shared during budget. It just shows the five percent forecasted rate increases over the ten-year planning horizon and rate harmonization achieved in twenty thirty-one. Next slide, please. And as Lynn shared earlier, the CIP functions as a roadback for Wes's budget. And although they're closely connected, the annual budget is adopted, uh, independently from the CIP. So we wanted to kind of show that connection and process here. Uh, to summarize, we essentially take the next year's, uh, capital improvement plans, uh, from the CIP. That becomes our annual capital budget. We work that into the rate model and forecast rates, uh, using also the latest operating expense budgets and debt service budgets. Um, from there, we present our proposed annual budget and rates to the advisory committee and budget committees for their input. And at that point, uh, it becomes a feedback loop. Um, advisory committee and budget committee input can, uh, certainly revise the budget. And that would in turn revise rate forecasting and, uh, create a new proposed budget. The formal adoption by the board is another opportunity where the, that might be revised. So again, that can put us into a feedback loop where we go back, make those revisions based on board action and then revise the budget. So although they're connected, they are independent of each other. Um, next slide, please. Right, back to Lynn.
Okay, so to summarize, we've got a five-year wastewater capital, um, improvement plan of a hundred and ninety-two million dollars. Um, we'll take any questions we have while time allows now. And then any other questions you have, I would assume you get to, um, Diana or Greg, um, will be happy to address any questions you have. And then with the surface water changes, um, we'll get those out to you, I'm sure. Um, so you can take a look at those before the November tenth meeting, which is where we'll be asking for your endorsement with a motion of support. Um, if we do receive that in November, then we'll move forward and take this to the board in December.
William?
Well, I'm, I'm convinced that we're going to be able to get through this, but I had a hypothetical question and it, and it really, really kind of falls between Aaron and Lynn. So just imagine, if you would, that the, that the BCC would say, oh, that's too much. You've got to cut your CIP by five percent. Just imagine that. That the options would be either to cut out a significant project or to try to go across the board and take five percent off of each project. Neither one of them are very good. Neither one of them are very good options. But I'm just curious, and maybe a, a possible combination of both of them. I don't know, but I don't know where we, because I think that in all of your estimating, both of you have been very conscientious about keeping costs as low as possible. Um, but you know how those commissioners can be. That, that sometimes they just think, oh, well, we'll just slash it a little bit and you figure out how to slash it.
Thank you, William.
I hope it doesn't happen. Oh, she's still here. Sorry, sorry, Commissioner.
Oh, I've been here the whole time.
I know you haven't. So politely listening, I know. Uh, but there are sometimes of voices that say, well, things should just be less than they are.
Right. So, uh, William, thank you for that. And maybe Aaron can chime in here as far as there, there is an interplay between, you know, our capital expenses and our operating expenses and what our rates need to be to accommodate both. Um, Aaron, do you want to speak to that?
Yeah, well, it's based on total revenue requirements. So if they said you have to cut capital, we might be able to make up for some of it and reduce operating expenses. It isn't likely because that budget is pretty tight. Um, yeah, I, that would be a challenge. It, I'm not sure how how much a five percent reduction in capital expenses would reduce rates.
I just, I just grabbed that number out of my hat.
Yeah, but it's a fair question and would be worth running some what-if analyses, I think, just in case.
And, and the fact is our operating expenses because of, you know, PERS and, you know, the contract stuff and, you know, it, it's, it's also in the five to six percent range, um, year over year, always has been. And we shouldn't expect it to be anything different.
Yeah. One last observation that's not exactly related to that is that is the, that of SDCs and projected growth. And my understanding of SDCs is that those are to pay for anticipated growth. And I know that you've done the analysis as to what that growth is going to be. Um, but, um, if something happens that that growth does not occur, we have to remember that those SDCs will not occur either. I mean, right now, Oregon City has a, has a huge project, probably the largest construction project in their history of something like nine hundred units possibly going into the park place area. That's going to generate huge amounts of SDCs, but only if it happens. And it's been in planning for twenty years now, so we can't really expect that that's going to be happening in the next few months. But I just want to remember that, that dynamic between the SDCs and projected growth that it's both, uh, they're so interdependent on each other.
Right. Um, Greg DiLoretto?
Thank you. I have a question, but I did want to respond to William's comment for a minute. Um, I think of some kind of notion that came across the board to cut our CIP. We'd have a responsibility as committee members to show up to that meeting and talk about how important that is. And I think most of you know, I do this all the time. And in fact, I've been testifying on the Jackson, Mississippi case was even on the NBC nightly news for that. So if that looks like it's happening, we need to know about it and we need to show up and talk about, because we've put a lot of effort into studying why it's important. So I would ask all of the members of this committee to think about that. Should that, I don't see it being the case, frankly. I mean, Wes has done a great job laying out why we need it. And what you'd most likely do is cut a project is what you'd end up doing. You can't just cut five percent. Now, my question, I read the whole packet and so on page ninety-three of one twenty, it's the boring upgrades. And in your justification for the project, you say that it can't meet its NPDES, National Pollution Discharge Elimination. It can't meet it for a significant portion of the year. But if you look at the funding, it doesn't happen until twenty-eight to thirty-four, which leads me to the question, gee, how, it would seem to me that one would move up to number one on the priority list. But second, given that more money came from the, uh, IIJA into the state revolving fund and we're not meeting a permit, you know, our permit. That is a kind of project that the state revolving fund was put together to, to finance. So.
Greg, I said nobody would ask about boring.
It's not that boring.
You were wrong, Lynn.
Yeah. Do you want to take it, Greg?
Um, sure. Um, you know, it, it does appear to be a no-brainer. Um, and we did a pretty, well, one of the, um, things that Lynn talked about was we did a master plan for boring. We looked at all kinds of different options from, you know, uh, upgrading the treatment to putting in a, um, like large onsite septic system to pumping to Sandy, to pumping to maybe even Gresham and then to our system. And after we did the preliminary, um, engineering study, it, it made sense that we would pump to our system. And then we did a little bit more looking at it and realized that a, what we thought was going to be a, I don't know, five to six million dollar project actually would be a perhaps a ten million dollar project. And then we looked at, well, what does it cost for us to use Wes's existing Wes infrastructure, trucks and, and conveyance system? And I think it was around, it was less than a half a million dollars a year. Um, well, well, less than that. And so it, yeah, it's no way to run a railroad, that's for sure. But until we have a better answer, a- and we also put in, uh, we're working with our congressional, um, uh, delegations and we have a two million dollar earmark, uh, that could possibly come through to, to help pay for that. But even if we get the two million dollar earmark, uh, an eight million dollar project to solve a, a problem that affects such a small community and we can kind of manage it uh, for a few hundred thousand dollars a year, it, it, it just doesn't pencil at this point. And it, it's, it's definitely a conundrum. We're struggling with that. And when I just talked to Lynn last week and said, we need to take another look at this. Um, there's got to be a better way, but right now we just don't see one.
So we're not actually violating our permit. If we just left the thing as, so the justification's a little bit off in that sense. I mean, you're, if you leave the system the way it is, you'll violate your permit. But you figured out a way to do it without violating your permit. So
We are, we are, we are discharging and we can reword that, but no, we just, we don't, we're hauling it in the winter and we're irrigating the site in the summer.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? We're over our time and I want to, I want to make sure we're respectful of the, uh, the extra meeting that we added tonight and, uh, not drag on too long.
And if I can just say one thing, I mean, there's a reason why we, you know, wanted to present this tonight and then come for a part two next time. Uh, this, there's a, you know, it, God bless you for read, if you read the whole document, um, there's a lot there. This is a complex, um, issue, uh, yet a lot of, a lot of stuff, a lot of ramifications. So we really wanted to put it forward tonight and offer, you know, over the next month, um, I'd be happy to sit down and Lynn and, and others, um, if you have questions, we really want to give a, a, a deep soak on this and make sure that people are really understand it and are comfortable with it and happy to spend as much time with you, uh, between now and our next meeting as, as nee- as needed.
And so those questions can be directed to Greg or to Ron or to Aaron, depending on what, uh, topic it is or to Lynn. All of you can, and, and answer the questions. So Shelley?
Yes, actually. So I will send up a, send out a follow-up and if they would send all questions to me and then I can facilitate it, getting it to the team and getting them back. That way, there's one central point of contact for everybody.
Fabulous. Great idea. Any other questions?
Good work.
No, that was great work. Yeah, it's, it's, it is very complicated and I like that it's broken up into chunks like this. I have to say, this would be an awfully long meeting in November if we were to add this, uh, whole thing to our November. Especially with the changes that are coming, which are happy changes, good changes, but still it's, uh, it's going to be a lot to cover even next month. So.
Yeah.
All right. If that's it, I think this meeting is adjourned.
Go team.